You have been put on hold.
Quick minute here, just to ensure that everybody who's critical to the meeting is available and online. Okay. All right, come on over here. Well, good evening, happy Tuesday, everybody, on this April fourteenth. It's now seven thirty, and it appears that all essential participants have now arrived, and I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the City Council to order. And with that, I have a special guest speaker here to say the pledge of allegiance for us. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to my son Marco, and you can say the pledge for me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, and with that, will the clerk please call the roll and make a moment so everyone can unmute from the council side?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matt.
Yes. Here.
Brian. O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessassi.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Sanoika.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of this virtual audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's media outlets. My first order is going to be to remind everybody about the ground rules as we've been doing these for the past couple meetings now. And before we get underway, the first one is that staffs and members of the city council please remain muted when it's not your turn to speak. And second, please use that raise hand feature when making a motion and or wanting to discuss an item at the appropriate time in order to effectively track these engagements, both motions and knowing when discussion is ready. Next, members of the public who should remain muted here throughout the entirety of this meeting, but please know that you will be afforded the opportunity to speak during the public comment segment so long as you've provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you'd like to address before the deadline, which was indicated on tonight's agenda, and of course, that is if you are present on this evening's meeting afterward. Now, moving forward, the first item on the agenda is the business of approving the previous minutes from the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty city council meeting. Is there a motion by show of hands for approving these minutes? Alderman O'Brien made the first, and thank you Alderman Sanoika for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Please show the hands if any. It doesn't look like there are any, so seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. It appeared unanimous with the ayes, so those minutes are approved. And now brings us to the mayor's report here, and I don't have much to say to keep this meeting moving swiftly, just a couple quick items. The first one is just to remind residents and anybody who is curious or concerned, they should be going to the city's website for the latest updates or resources regarding the issues here in the community and COVID-nineteen pandemic. These recent resources have also included a spreadsheet that Martha Coroner and Don Wenzel created that have an active list of businesses who are still operational, and it also includes restaurants. So I think that's a valuable tool, especially when we're looking toward creating some more initiatives to keep shop local up and running. The next thing was, this weekend, I was doing some reading, and I read some interesting information from the Brookings Institute regarding the impact of COVID-nineteen and our economy and how we work our way out of this. And as a result of that, I had a conversation with manager Crumstock on liking to see what the COVID-nineteen impact is going to be on our budget. And so with that, I do want to start seeing as we go through this next series of months here, some sort of forecast on our budget, and a pie chart would be the most simple or effective way of doing this in looking at something that illustrates the different scenarios of our revenues and how they're impacted from ten percent reduction in revenues, thirty percent, or even eighty percent, and how that's going to cause us to adjust our spending. That's why I do want to see something like that come out, so we can also help residents understand what steps we're taking, as this impact is not just affecting the community from the city hall perspective, but I know it's also affecting residents and their budgets and what they're doing to be proactive, you know, from the inevitable outcome. With that, are there any ward reports this evening by show of hand? Alderman Sanoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would like to begin by stating that many residents have reached out stating that with the better weather, they've noticed more people are spending times in our parks and along our extensive pedestrian bicycle networks, which is great. For the most part, they've said that they've been able to easily maintain at least six feet away from others in these public spaces. But they did mention that there are others that are not remembering to leash their dogs. So while you may have an excellent relationship with your dogs, you must maintain control over them at all times. Additionally, owners who fail to leash their dogs could face fines of up to a hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense and up to five hundred dollars for repeat offenders. If Chief Nowacki or Chief Nowacki and the Rolling Meadows Police Department increased patrols to enforce leash laws in various areas near Rolling Meadows High School, Chief Nowacki, if you're on this call, should residents expect increased patrols in other areas?
Yes, hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yes, we will have extra patrols out, especially in the areas of the parks, weather permitting, we will have our police ATV out this weekend. Also did have a conversation with the park district regarding social distancing and so forth at our parks. They had put some signage up, and they also have some extra staff on hand to monitor the situation.
Thank you, Chief Nowacki, and if there are residents that encounter owners with dogs that aren't leashed, what should they do in that moment, or what are they expected to do?
The best cause for action would be to call nine-one-one. Anytime you observe a violation in progress, we would obviously like to be informed and then have an officer respond out to that location to address the situation. So our setup is, if you need a police officer to respond for an act of in-progress incident, even a dog call, the proper channel would be to dial nine-one-one, and like I said, we would have an officer dispatched to that area to address the situation.
Thank you, Chief Nowacki, and one follow-up to that, because while this has been communicated to some residents, they feel that it's an overreaction to call nine-one-one for these types of violations. I've communicated with them that this is data that's important to the police department, that this is all compiled and used in order to be able to determine where we can put patrols, but was there any additional information or context that you could provide for those residents who are hesitant to report?
They could always email the police department if they observe like an offense that happens on a regular basis, such as on a certain date or a time. They could definitely send that to the police department anonymously. They could call and leave, you know, leave a message to, and we will respond, but we will have some additional patrols out, especially as the weather gets nicer. But if there is an incident where a dog is chasing individuals, running at large, and they feel it's necessary that, you know, should be addressed immediately with the owner, definitely call nine-one-one.
Thank you. And thank you to Public Works for addressing four issues on Cole Court in the seventh ward, which included an inquiry into increased lighting for that area, responsibilities for maintaining a right-of-way, considering a concrete epoxy for the sidewalk and some tree trimming. Additionally, Public Works is in the process of investigating possible effects of a Schaumburg construction project on internet service. At this time, if WOW internet subscribers are experiencing service disruptions, please reach out to WOW directly to address that issue. However, you are encouraged to inform the city as well in the event that internet connectivity issues are more widespread, and city staff will investigate alternative solutions or alternate solutions. And then lastly, no residents have reached out to me personally about the hardships impacting them due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, but I have to assume that's either because these individuals are already receiving assistance from city staff and county officials, or they don't know whom to contact. I encourage residents who are struggling to reach out to the representatives to make sure the decisions we make at the local level are working for you. We are your voice, and we will make decisions to support you and our community during this difficult time if we know which issues are impacting you most. With that, I conclude my award report and yield my time to the chair.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoika. Alderman Beniziano, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. So I have two things. One, to kind of piggyback off of Alderman Sanoika, I really encourage residents to call the appropriate departments, whether that be the police department or Public Works. If you see, you know, something going on in your neighborhood, we had a couple incidents here in the fourth ward, you know, some residents seeing some stuff going on, and they contacted me, which, you know, I'm more than happy to field those calls. But I encourage you to call the police department or Public Works, you know, to resolve these issues as well. And I'm glad that we were able to take care of them, and I thank, you know, Chief Nowacki for assisting us so quickly. And then second of all, it was just on the fly about two minutes ago, I'm going to do a video in the next couple days of donating proper P E, P P E, so putting on and taking off masks and putting on and taking off gloves properly. Been around town in the community of Jewel and Walmart and seen a lot of residents, you know, wearing their P P E, and we just want to make sure that residents are safe and doing it the proper way. So in the next couple days, I'm going to do a video and post it and get it out on social media.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Okay, doesn't look like there are any additional hands being raised. I'm just going to do a quick scroll through the list to make sure I'm not missing anyone. And it doesn't appear that I am. So that brings us now to the time in the meeting when we open the floor to the public for twenty minutes. And there is actually one signature on the sign-in sheet. And so in order to begin, I will start by reading a few rules that we should follow. And with that, for the rules of procedures, the public is to address the city council. And the city council, by not responding, does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with any comments. And in order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition. And in this case, in order to speak, you have to unmute yourself. And if you're dialing in by phone, you press star six. If you're dialing in by the computer, you can go ahead and select unmute when I call your name. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes in this time period. Questions and or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing nominated person's candidacy for elective office shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address council members or other city officers present. Finally, profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. And with that, I do have the name of Sam Moktarian on the list. So Sam, if you're on the call, please feel free to unmute against star six or unmute via the unmute option on your computer. Sam, the floor is yours.
Yes, oh, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm the owner of the small strip center down the street from the city hall, twenty-six thirty-three, twenty-six thirty-five Kirchhoff Road, where Lulu's Restaurant slash Gaming establishment wants to go. I really haven't prepared anything formal to present, but I just thought I'd say a couple of words how detrimental it is for this establishment to open up and add to the vitality of our center. It's a small center. These two individuals, which are very experienced restaurant slash gaming operators, they have four other operations in different suburbs, extremely competent, smart people, the village staff, they have, they had in two thousand eighteen looked into their backgrounds and their abilities to run restaurants and the gaming. They signed the lease September of two thousand eighteen. And unfortunately, they still haven't opened up, and I understand there are some still debates about if the village would allow them to open the gaming restaurant, even though they have met every ordinance, every requirement that village has asked them, they have met, they have done their build-out. They're about eighty-five percent done. I encourage the city council and the honorable mayor to come and look at the build-out they have done. It's going to be a really a top-class restaurant. They're going to be serving slider hamburgers, which is their specialty. And they have a little room in the back that they're going to have gaming. They met with the staff many times, and they are complete compliance with the village. So it's really going to be a good addition to our center, going to be a good addition to the neighborhood, especially with Taco Bell now closing just down the street from us. We're really in a dire need of a little bit of activity and excitement in our center, in that area and in the town. So I just hope that the city council, the honorable mayor, keep all this in mind. They have spent over a hundred eighty thousand dollars in build-out. And I have asked them if they don't get the gaming, would they open the restaurant? And they said absolutely not. Their game plan is restaurant gaming, video gaming, that's all, all the other four establishments that they have. So they, I don't know if they're listening to this or not, but they have indicated after tonight, if they do not get a positive reading from the city council, they're just going to walk away, even though they have a ten-year lease, they're just going to walk away from the premises, and it's not going to be really good for them, for us, for the neighborhood. So I just thought I wanted to put my two cents in, and I appreciate any help that the council and the mayor could give us to get them over this little hump and see them open up. And again, in this trying times, they're going to be a good addition. We might lose a couple of other tenants in that center because of this rough time that we are in. So any help, anything that the city council, the mayor can do, we certainly appreciate it. So again, I thank you for the efforts and the vote of confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your candor, Mr. Moktarian. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, that now concludes all the names on the sign-in sheet. So this brings us now to pending ordinances in for second reading. First line item here, ordinance number two zero dash one five, amending the alcohol liquor code to approve a class G-one liquor license for video gaming for MJ Hospitality LLC, doing business as Lulu's at twenty-six thirty-three Kirchhoff Road. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman Sanoika, and thank you Alderman Diastis for the second. Is there any discussion by show of hand? I'll wait for the hands to come up. I see Alderman Sanoika, feel free to take the floor, and then Alderman Bud Matts after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So given our productive conversations at the March thirty-first committee of the hall, I am not in favor of granting a G-one license to a new establishment at this time. The council agreed informally to zoning caps and implementing a six-month waiting period on new establishments operating as bars or restaurants in the city of Rolling Meadows. Members of our business community and our residents have shared their unease due to the lack of regulation. Therefore, I believe it is in the best interest of our community to clarify our expectations. This would entail the restructure of our G-one license to clarify its use as a competitive economic tool for our existing bars and restaurants, or for new bars and restaurants that have operated in the city within a continuous six-month timeframe. Furthermore, the council should create a new G-two license to regulate businesses operating for the primary purpose of video gaming. So if Lulu's would like to operate as a restaurant, I would expect to see at least six months of operation or attempted operation, given the current stay-at-home order across the state. If Lulu's business model necessitates video gaming, as the owner of the property has stated it does, then I would suggest that Lulu's withdraw their G-one application and apply for a G-two license once created. They're not losing out on anything at this time because everything else is closed due to that stay-at-home order per the governor. So unless an alderman is willing to make a motion to postpone this item with the belief that council efforts to restructure, the G-one license will fail, I will be voting no to this license and later this evening request that the council review G-one and G-two ordinance draft at next week's committee of the hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoika. And just to be clear, did I hear any motion to postpone from your end or no?
No motion for me. If another alderman wishes to postpone with the belief that any negotiations for restructuring to G-one or G-two will fail, then they are free to do so. I will be not making that motion tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Alderman Bud Matts, you hand your hand up second. You're free to take the floor.
No, I concur with, I concur with Alderman Sanoika's comments. So I think that the G-one and the G-two, a creation of a G-two is required, and feel that she adequately summed up the last meeting's comments. And so I think that we could vote on this. And then if MJ Hospitality cannot operate as a restaurant, and they insist that they have to have a gaming license to start their business, then they will need to apply for the G-two license once it's created. But at this point, I think that that's the road we should go.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Anything further?
Not for me.
Okay, Alderman Bessassi, I do see your hand is up. The floor is yours.
Yes, I think Lulu's is in a slightly different situation than anyone else that will be moving forward at this time or being proposed at this time. They've been on our agenda for a fairly long time, and we've known about this property since the first time we attempted to make changes to the ordinance. to the ordinance. My, my concern is the signal that dissents the business in our community. I will be voting yes on this ordinance. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further comments? Or Alderman Besessi, can I lower your hand? Lower. Okay. I just want to say that I, after the last meeting, committee of the whole, and this conversation, I really do think it's appropriate that we bifurcate G one and G two. I think it's important that we allow those gaming cafes that want to come into the community as a gaming cafe to be proud of that and their business model, but also we as a city to be, to be cognizant that the residents are not in favor of a super saturation of gaming cafes and that a model such as Schaumburg's where we have G one allocated to restaurants whose primary focus is, you know, service of food and beverage and entertaining restaurants through food and beverage. And then the secondary is a gaming cafe or a gaming parlor where their primary focus is to entertain patrons through gaming and supplemental with food and beverage. And I think they should be proud of those models. I think both models are both lucrative. And I think we just need to, to be able to provide a platform that can demonstrate both of those. And so I, I do agree that we should be exploring the bifurcation of a G one and G two. Alderman Budmats, you have your hand up, and this will be your second time if it's up for speaking.
Yep. If we're going to talk about the, the merits of Lulu's as a, as a organization and not just talking about the G one and G two bifurcation, then I do want to address that based on Alderman Besessi's comments. The truth is, is that last year we passed chickens, and none of the citizens stood before us and said, hey, I've already built a coop, and I expect you to pass, you know, my license through because I want chickens really bad. And the truth of the matter is, is that, that Lulu's may have put the horse before the cart. And the, I read Mr. Moktarion's letter where he says that we as a village board approved this in advance, we approved them to have a liquor license. They, they have can and will, if they wish to open a restaurant and can serve alcohol. So we're not limiting their ability to operate as a restaurant, which is what this, this law was created to give restaurants an advantage. It was not created to, originally created to provide an opportunity for gaming parlors to, to exist or to come into our town. And so if they can't open up a restaurant without having gaming, then, then literally then gaming is, is their business. And so I, I will not be voting for them based on the merits of their particular application. And I have watched as individual city council members have supported or opposed different G one applicants based on what they thought their merits were for whatever their particular reasons. And some opposed existing city businesses, and then others supported unknown quantities. And, and as a result, we have, we have gaming cafes in Rolling Meadows. I don't think it was our original intention to have them, but now we do. And so the fact that we have made the mistake in the past does not give us the right to continue to make the mistake over and over again. That this means that it's time to say no, no more gaming cafes. And if Lulu's is really a restaurant, then it shouldn't be an issue for them to open up as a restaurant for six months and operate without gaming. If they're a restaurant and my wife and I go there and have dinner, and it's a restaurant, and everybody else in the council gets a chance in those six months to go and, and have dinner at this restaurant, and they come back and say, hey, we really need this game to keep our restaurant viable, then I won't think it'll be a problem to get it passed if they're a restaurant. If they're a gaming parlor, shouldn't be, then they're going to have an issue because we, we, we're looking for restaurants, not additional gaming parlors if we can avoid it, especially when it's in close proximity to another gaming parlor, you know, less than two hundred fifty yards away. So I will be voting no based on the merits of or the lack thereof for Lulu's.
I yield the floor. Thank you, Alderman Budmats. And we did hear from tonight's speaker that if they do not get the gaming, they will not open. So Alderman Veniziano, you do have the floor with your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I'm a little concerned that we're putting the best interest of a, a business before the, the concerns of our residents. We're placed on the, the city council by our residents. And, and I know that I have, you know, spoken to many residents in, in our ward where this establishment will be coming. And the concern is, is that it's another gaming cafe and with one being right across the street. You know, so my first allegiance is to our residents. And so I am definitely in favor of, you know, the establishing the G one and G two and, and getting this ordinance correct and then establishing businesses that can apply for the, the licenses appropriately, you know, if they, you know, apply to them. You know, so I will be voting no in, in, in light of this license and, and then implore Lulu's to apply for a G two once we get our ordinances established the proper way.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Is there anything further? If not, then Alderman O'Brien, I do see your hand is up. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just real quickly here, I do obviously honor the, the great discussion we've had. I do want to say that I did receive very favorable feedback from a handful of residents I've been talking to from the third ward over the last six or eight months we've been looking at this, based on our meeting last time, where we did put in the potential, and we did have some of the discussion around limiting the gaming within a certain area as well as the six-month waiting period. The residents I spoke to were in favor of that. So I am still in support. So if we do move this for a vote this evening, I will be in support of that based on the resident feedback that I have. They felt it was very well done from when we specked it out that this would be the third, and that should help us limit. But I also do wholeheartedly believe going forward, it would be great to get the parameters so we're not in this situation again. But if this does move forward tonight, I will continue with my vote in the affirmative based on resident feedback and that they felt that discussion, as Alderman Sanoyka did point out, that we had some tentative agreements in place for limiting within a certain area as well as overall gaming parlors versus restaurants was making progress at the last committee of the whole. So in support of what the, the residents have reached out to me, this would put the third there. That was the draft recommendation in the, the committee to hold. So I will be voting the affirmative if this does move forward.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Anything further? Okay. Alderman Sanoyka, floor is yours, second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to address the comment that Alderman Besessi had brought up about his desire of having consistent messaging to the business community and, or that he did not want to, not necessarily consistent, but that he wanted to send a message to the business community. And I just want to remind the council that during the committee of the whole, we received a letter from various business owners that were not in favor of expanding the, expanding G one licensing, that they felt that the market was saturated. So when Alderman Besessi is talking about how he would like to, not necessarily appease the business community, but, but act in their favor, I think that it is not necessarily, it, it's not necessarily a monolith of, of stakeholders that he's considering and that there are multiple, there are multiple interests at play. So when he states that if he's referring to new business owners, making sure that the rules are consistent across the board, this is one of those instances where we can actually, as Alderman Veniziano and Alderman Budmats have stated, demonstrate that we actually are very consistent in clarifying what our expectations are by bifurcating our G one license to a G one and a G two. And then to also continue along what Alderman O'Brien brought up about ensuring that we have limits and that our residents are in favor of limits, we would most likely consider limits for G two and perhaps not, not, you know, and perhaps have different limits for that G one. So that way, the business community and all of the segments are very clear about what the council expects going forward. So I hope that Alderman Besessi considers that in his vote tonight.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman Besessi, I see your hand is up. Floor is yours for the second time.
I think some of what I was saying may have been slightly misinterpreted. I am in favor of a lot of the things that we spoke about at the committee of the whole as far as, and I really like the limitations in the various zones and the separation G one and G two. However, this particular business is in a situation that none of the other potential businesses applying for this license are in. They've been strung along by our city staff for the last year. They've been told, you know, to do this, to do that, put in the hood, you know, you know, you know, all the different things. And now at the last minute, we're going and looking at potentially saying no at this time. I would just ask that this one should be an exception. I think if we vote this down, it is a signal to businesses, you know, in two ways, some positive, some negative, but it would be a signal that, you know, don't listen to what city staff says. Don't listen to what people from our, our business advocate says. Don't listen to any of them. Don't do a single thing or put a single penny in until you've come to city council. So we kind of hamstring our staff from giving any direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Besessi. And that, that is a point to be clarified, maybe not necessarily for this moment in time, but it is the council's decision for this, and I think that's where there was miscommunication from the start. But going back to this entity, MJ Hospitality, doing business as Lulu's, they are prepared to walk away from this site. I have been able to see past some of the crate paper, and I know that if they're okay with walking away, that the level of construction hasn't been that significant to date. So I, I don't want you to feel as though they've, they've sunk in an exorbitant amount of money. They've obviously invested, right, agreed. But with our community development department and the rate of site readiness, it's not that significant because, again, this was purely contingent on receiving the G one, and this is for restaurants. And if they don't get the G one, they're not interested in opening. If there isn't any further comments from the other two aldermen who have not spoken yet, then I will ask for the clerk to call the roll. And if the clerk can give a moment to allow unmuting, then we can go ahead and call roll.
Okay. Veniziano.
No.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, this ordinance does pass. That means it's adopted. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have our ordinances in for first reading. It consists of one item, item B. Staff is asking for a waiver of the first reading for item B so this ordinance can be approved immediately. Is there an alderman willing to make this motion for waiving the first reading of the ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. This ordinance is number two zero dash one six to confirm and extend a declared state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to COVID nineteen pandemic. Is there any discussion on waiving this first reading? If so, please show a hand. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward to waive first reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veniziano.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance does move forward for second reading. And again, the ordinance number two zero dash one six is confirming and extending a declared state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Is there a motion for final approval? Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this final approval? Alderman Cannon, is your hand still up for speaking? Nope, wonderful. Looks like seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us on to new business, and it's a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for April fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Is there by show of hand a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, and thank you, Alderman Besessi. Is there by show of hand any discussion on the bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. That brings us now to the next item, which are the consent resolutions. It consists of four items, items D through G. Does any alderman, by way of showing hand, wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alderman Budmats, you have your hand raised. Can you please identify which one?
I would like to remove E and G.
E and G. Does any other alderman wish to remove anything beyond E and G? Budmats, I'm going to lower your hand real quick. That now leaves two items, items D and F. The chair declares it in order, in, in order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in one motion without debate, is there such a motion? By show of hand. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Cannon. That leaves us with item D, resolution number two zero dash R dash three nine, award a contract for two thousand twenty street reconstruction program, construction engineering services. And item F, resolution number two zero dash R dash four one, authorize a contract for the purchase of two police patrol vehicles and one administrative police vehicle. The question is, shall the two resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. This now circles us back to item E, resolution number two zero dash R dash four zero, award a contract for two thousand twenty street reconstruction project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Alderman Budmats, I'll ask you to make the first, and Alderman Diastis with the second. Alderman Budmats, since you pulled this, please go ahead and take the floor on this one.
Thank you. The governor this week said that in the, two weeks ago, in the one-week time period, that they received more first-time claims for unemployment than they had in all of last year. I have no idea how many of those claims came from Rolling Meadows, but it's but it seems to me that, um, for this council to spend eight hundred thousand dollars on, on roads and not have an idea of how many of our citizens are in serious financial trouble, um, and to just, um, in some respects, say, hey, it's in the budget, we're going to spend it because if we don't, you know, it won't be there. Um, versus saying, hey, before we spend anything, we really need to see if the, if our citizens can even afford. We have no idea what our economy is going to look like for the next three, four weeks until, um, until the stay at home order is lifted. Um, and it could be that everything goes back to normal, people get hired, and, and everything is hunky dory. Or it could not be that. And for us to spend this kind of money, um, to fix some roads, which is always necessary, and there's plenty of roads in Rolling Meadows that need to be fixed, but there also may be plenty of citizens who are going to need help getting their water bills paid. Um, or I have no idea, um, how many, how many of our citizens are even out of work. And so to just spend money as if there's really nothing going on outside the walls of city hall, um, is to me, um, is a little bit, um, uh, difficult. It's difficult for me to make that decision, knowing that others might be in financial trouble in our own city. Um, last year, we did not spend money on streets until the May meeting. Um, so if we wait two meetings and, um, and start our street construction program, we'll start it exactly when we started it and when we approved it in May last year. But this time, it's the first weekend, or the first meeting in April that we're approving it. So I, I don't see the, the harm in, um, in taking a motion to table this item, um, which is the most expensive, um, and, and tabling it until, um, until such time as the COVID order is lifted, and we have a, a, a report from the staff as to the anticipated financial, um, impact and the number of, if they can provide it for us, the number of citizens in Rolling Meadows who have presently been placed out of work as a result of, of the COVID nineteen virus. So, um, so I'm actually looking to make a motion to postpone until the COVID virus, um, stay at home order is lifted. And we know the impact of the, of the financial ramifications of this stay at home order.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. I'm going to ask Alderman Diastis, I do see your hand is raised at this time, but Alderman Budmats did put a motion, uh, to table this. So by show of hand, can I see if there's a support and a second to Alderman Budmats? Thank you, Alderman Beniziano for the second, Alderman Sanoika as well. So we, we do have the request to table that, or a motion at least. Is there additional conversation on, uh, the motion to table? Alderman O'Brien, there's quite a few, so just to hold on while the, the hands go up and down and it changes the order here. Um, Alderman O'Brien, then Alderman Cannon at this time.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and this might be for, uh, Melissa Gallagher. Is, I, that's a very valid point that Alderman Budmats brings up, um, as well. Is, with my memory for the money that this has been allocated in the fund, would we be able to use that to assist, like to offset other funds within the city if there were residents having problems with water bills, utility bills, something like that? Would the current, like, the setup of the account, and I'm not sure on the state statutes or anything like that, but from a, a financial perspective, the money that's been allocated to the roads project, could that be leveraged for use as Alderman Budmats, uh, proposed?
No. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I saw, uh, Manager Crumstock's hand is up as well. So after Melissa, Manager Crumstock can chime in there if she wants to speak too.
But, 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 uh, Ms. Gallagher, so if, if, like, would it take an action of city council? I mean, if we were in that situation, we had residents in that type of situation, would it be a determination that the council can make, or that's not even an option?
I'll, I'll hand it over first to City Manager Crumstock, and then I can respond as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, obviously, you can't see me, I'm sitting in my office. But remember, when Melissa and I look at the overall budget, each one has its own funds. The fund that you're talking about right now, a street and MFT, obviously, when we talk about those pieces. The council can always switch and change money from funds. It does take another resolution, another piece in this point in time. What I would tell you is that these are very good prices, as you could see, it's about two hundred thousand dollar savings. It does keep us on schedule when the council asked us to keep projects going. Even during the recession, we did it. But also at the same point in time, I think when we come back to recovery, does keep projects going. It does make sure pricing now compared to pricing later might be higher because of, you know, how things are today's or tomorrow. But at the same point in time, going back to your question, Alderman O'Brien, it is money that we do have allocated, it is money that we do have in a budget, we do have, look in, look at our revenues overall. And again, um, Finance Director, Director Melissa Gallagher and I look at the entire budget. It's not just the, um, general fund was, if we had any of those discussions, we would have any of those, uh, you know, items, if you want to do something for someone who's hurting, or how are we dealing with it? And again, I can tell you, anybody who's contacted us, we do have payment plans, we do have scheduling. But at the same point in time, how we look at this is, again, just because it's in the budget, we're not doing everything, but we are being very active of overall some of the pieces that we're looking at. So I can tell you very comfortably with, um, staff, we've had these discussions. And again, the overall budget, we do look that over. And if the council states at a later date that you want to move some fund balance from one location to another, a recommendation from staff to help out when we have some of our numbers. And again, some of our overall numbers come in arrears. And as Mayor Gallo mentioned during the mayor's report, we are looking at those. We will have during the June committee, the whole nice snapshot that we have, but we are evaluating and looking and making sure that the high services continue, but also making sure that the overall health and long-term look and outreach for the community is being, um, viewed. And with that, I will meet myself again.
All right, Ms. Gallagher, do you want to continue where you left off with this?
Yeah, I'll just add on, uh, to what City Manager Crumstock had also mentioned. And it is such a good point that city council is bringing up. Uh, the unknown is out there, we, we know that. Uh, but at the same point, like City Manager Crumstock has mentioned, that we are closely monitoring the budget and the items that are coming through right now. We are wrapping up the city's audit right now with the city's auditors for the next two weeks. And our draft we're working on for the twenty nineteen look, and that will be presented in June. And as City Manager Crumstock had mentioned as well, that the pricing, uh, you know, right now is good in terms of the reconstruction pricing, uh, in this item for this resolution. Uh, that may change, uh, if we postpone it. The other piece to that too, and I, and I agree that we are fine tuning, just like we did, we do every single month in terms of fine tuning and looking at everything that we do. Uh, we will come back to the city council with revenue estimates, expenditure estimates, uh, as we move along here. Since this is just very fluid and just taking place, we won't know the picture until we get into the month of May, how April fares. Because we're just getting results right now from March, and balancing and reconciling right now for March. But that's something we do all the time. Getting back to the local road fund in terms of local road, I'll just remind the council that a levy exists in this local road fund for one million dollars. When the, the city council levies for that local road fund, that amount goes right into the local road fund. There are other revenues, uh, in that, um, fund. And as City Manager Crumstock has mentioned, should the city council decide to transfer funds, just be aware of the fact that the, one of the major revenues in this fund is a million dollars towards the roads as a property tax levy. So just letting council understand those, those items. And we'll get back to you more with information as well, the overall picture, but I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, Melissa. Alderman O'Brien, is there anything further, uh, to your place?
Just a follow up question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and again, this might be for Finance Director Gallagher or Manager Crumstock. I was trying to look through the paperwork. Usually the bids are good for thirty or sixty days. I don't see that on here, sort of Alderman Budmats' point, if we were to, to potentially delay it to May, do we have anything, were they, were they honor the bid for thirty or sixty days? I just didn't see that in any of the paperwork, where on some of the other bids we do.
Waiting to see a show of hand from either Manager Crumstock or Melissa with any input, or maybe even Director Horn.
Still getting the hang of all this, sorry. Uh, a lot of screens and computers here. Uh, but anyway, what I was going to say, this is Melissa Gallagher, um, can I ask, uh, Public Works Director Horn, uh, to verify?
Yes, um, I cannot find my hand raising, I was trying to raise my hand. Um, yeah, generally, I don't have the exact answer. What I do know is that it's generally thirty days or forty five days. I was just trying to count my calendar, I didn't get finished before you asked your question. So usually it's forty five days. Um, but generally contractors would be willing to hold their pricing. Uh, my only concern about this is that, uh, obviously this contractor, uh, was highly motivated uh, because they were awarded the road resurfacing project. So there is a matter of, um, mobilization costs that this contractor obviously plans to take advantage of by starting their projects at similar times.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, guys. Um, I do see Alderman Sanoika and Alderman Beniziano, but I want to check with Alderman Cannon because your hand was up during Alderman O'Brien's as well. Do you still want the floor? Because the time would be yours, if not, I'll move on to the other.
I don't need it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, then Alderman Sanoika, your hand is still raised, floor is yours if you want it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I wanted to double check with, uh, Director Gallagher regarding, um, some stress testing that we have for our funds. Um, Mayor Gallo had requested a strategy, some strategy response if we were to lose ten, twenty, or up to eighty percent of our revenues, um, in the mayor report. Um, do we have an ETA on that, on that strategy response? Or, or, or that, um, uh, that study?
Uh, so if I'm responding, this is Melissa Gallagher, Finance Director. Um, given that I just did hear this at the top of the meeting, uh, I definitely have been working with City Manager Crumstock already, uh, since this closure of city hall, and prior to that as well. Um, just as an overall picture for, to address this question, um, we do resiliency planning and testing. We say stress testing of all revenues and all funds. That's what we do normally. Uh, we have a resiliency policy in terms of looking overall at the entire picture, and I think City Manager Crumstock mentioned that as well. Um, given the fact that, um, give a little more clarity what, uh, mayor had mentioned in the beginning, definitely we can work on that. Um, obviously, City Manager Crumstock and the mayor have already, um, provided some information generally, uh, that that is something that we will be directed to work on, and we will get back to the city council on that, uh, as soon as we can. Uh, I would allow just a little bit time as we're kind of finishing up the city's audit, which does take priority, but just chiming in to answer that question.
And this is the mayor filling in on that. So last week on Friday afternoon, I spoke with Manager Crumstock on that. And he mentioned that, obviously, this being his first official day back from, from being out, um, with illness, that he was going to work with you going forward. And of course, information comes in, in arrears, and that we'll be able to start on this feasibly by the end of this month, getting the trickle down effect from what's happening in, in March, end of March, and beginning of April. So it's going to take time, I'm aware of that. But I did want the council to be aware that these are the types of forecasts we need to have available at our disposal. So when we're talking to residents and they're asking what we're doing about staff, if we're furloughing any of our city employees to help mitigate any potential, um, offsets for budgets, then we know what the potential impact of this whole issue is and how it plays out holistically within our budget. And so it's a work that will be in progress, and you do, of course, have time. Um, Alderman Sanoika, anything further on this?
Um, I do, um, I also wanted to just confirm then that, uh, because these are stress tests, stress tests that, that city staff routinely engage in, do we have the bandwidth in order to be able to make these purchases for roads, um, at, at this time? Or if we go over twen-, or if we lose twenty percent of our revenues as of this, of this month going forward, is this something that will require furloughs in order for us to manage our budget going forward?
Uh, Mayor, this is, uh, manager, if you want to let me talk in both.
Yeah.
So again, this is, uh, City Manager Barry Crumstock. Like I said earlier in the comments, so we are doing our stress testing. We are going, as the mayor said, pie charts and other pieces that you've heard. But like I said, in June, we're actually going to have a cow in some of our other pieces. Yes, we do have the revenue to do this, yes, we do have monitoring that we do. We're also maintaining all the, uh, overalls. And when you look at some of the positives and you look at some of the negatives, it also details some of the other options and conservative looks that we look at. And as the mayor mentioned, when I've had conversations with him and other aldermen, this is what we do all the time, we look at the stress, and that's why we have a very diverse revenue source. So yes, you, we'll have a few of them that are coming down, but then there's a question, there might be a few that come back up. And then there's the question of where you've always heard me, everybody sitting on the council, even, um, our newest council member, when we talk about reserves, this is what, um, we always talk about, when you use them and when you're not. Never in my mind would have ever thought that we would been talking about a virus about it, but at the same point in time, the high quality services, maintaining all the levels that we have, plus some of the other conversations that we keep on having as staff, maintain all those pieces. So again, we're going to trickle more, how we look at things, some of those are in arrears in June. We will have a snapshot, obviously in December, we have a better snapshot. But at the same point in time, we are stress testing, we do have the money in place to do this. It maintains the stability, longevity, and also the long-term look on some of the other pieces. So with that, I hope that answers your questions and also gives you some confidence on some of the other pieces.
And again, that's okay, it is, this is about the tabling of this, uh, construction project, or at least the discussion of approving this construction project until, um, May, as Alderman Budmats suggested. And so I hope that information is helping the council form a decision as to whether or not we can table this. Um, or you vote down tabling it, and then vote the next step to approve, um, going forward with this. Uh, Alderman Sanoika, while the floor is still yours, is there anything further on the discussion of this item for tabling?
Yes, regarding this item for tabling, um, Director Horn had mentioned that we're looking at about, uh, the savings of two hundred thousand dollars, and that the quote that we received was about twenty percent lower than the engineer, um, estimate. And Director Horn had mentioned that the timing of this project and the timing of a separate project for resurfacing would be playing into those cost savings. And I just want to remind the council that two hu-, between two hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is enough to raise or lower our tax levy for our residents. And so if we would miss out on those types of savings by delaying, I, I would like to know if, if that's in the cards, if we were to delay, um, from, from Director Horn.
Director Horn, do you have a response to Alderman Sanoika?
Um, I'm, I'm not quite confident I understand the question. Um, are, are you indicating that would the savings be something that, um, I, I guess I would ask you to repeat the question.
Yeah, let me rephrase, I'm sorry. So the, the subcontractor that would, that would receive this, this contract, right? Um, you had stated that they are very motivated with this project, and that they might have a cost savings because of, of the mobility line item. And therefore, I'm asking that if we were to delay this by a month, would that impact the cost savings, the significant cost savings that we're receiving through, through this contractor?
Yeah.
And all the others?
Well, and I'm going to pause you both for a moment because this, to clarify, and I messed up. This is to actually, according to Alderman Budmats, to postpone until the governor lifts his order. Uh, that's what Alderman Budmats had, had asked us to have a motion on. So I guess the, the question still applies, but a difference between tabling this now for, for a month, or tabling to, or postponing until the governor lifts the order is a significant difference in time span, because we don't know when that, the governor's orders are going to lift. But still, to Alderman Sanoika's point, if we do not proceed now, are we going to lose out on this pricing based on that issue?
Um, again, assuming that this would be then delayed to the March twelfth meeting, or May twelfth meeting, I'm assuming, for approval, um, uh, if, if that was beyond the, um, days, uh, allowed through the contract, through the, uh, pricing, um, again, the contractor could, um, seek, uh, additional, uh, additional, um, payment or, or increased pricing, um, due to the, any, any loss that they realized, um, due to mobilization concerns. Um, again, if, if it happens that quickly, then maybe not, but, um, I can't guarantee that. But your point is, well, take-
But your point is well-taken that they certainly could seek an increase in cau- in line item costs if they felt like their mobilization, um, a lot of times contractors will dis- distribute their mobilization costs throughout all the line items. Um, so if they felt like, uh, they weren't going to be able to start the project when they wanted, they may increase those line item costs.
Okay. No further questions at this time from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Veneziano, thank you for being patient. You're up. And then Alderman Budmat, I see that your hand is back up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Horn, do you have a date that I know you've been looking at your calendar of when that, that deadline for the contract would be up? I know you said it could be thirty days, it could be forty-five days. I mean, at this point, fifteen days could be pretty significant.
Yes, it would be beyond forty-five days if we waited to approve it till Ma- May twelfth. I, I, I did do a really quick count, but yes, it would be beyond the forty-five day time period. Again, I, I have less concern that the contractor wouldn't, uh, grant an extension or, uh, extend their pricing beyond the forty-five day limit as I do that he would be looking to, um, potentially change unit pricing as a result of lost, um, the timing issues. But again, for May twelfth, maybe there would be no effect, but, um, there's no guarantee. I would assume that on May twelfth, it's going to be approved either.
Thank you.
Anything further, Alderman Veneziano?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Budmat, the floor is yours here.
Um, Mr. Horn, you stated that, uh, contractor, um, the low bidder is, I'm assuming is also the, um, bidder who's doing the reconstruction work on the south, south, southeast side of town. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're, they're doing the resurfacing project.
And, and when are they starting that? Do you, I mean, do you have a start date from them on that is the question?
Uh, Director Horn, you're muted. You know what? I can unmute you real quick here. Go ahead. I think we're playing unmute tag. Go.
Okay.
Don't touch it. You're good.
I'm not touching it.
There you go. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Um, now I forgot the question. Uh, when would we plan on starting? I'm sorry, uh, Alderman Budmat. Um, the, the contractor, uh, has been put on notice that, um, we want him to start in the, um, subdivision, the Waverly Park subdivision, as soon as the water main, uh, is completed and he can mobilize. Um, the original start date, um, was not going to be, uh, potentially till June first. Um, but our, um, as Alderman Bessesi can attest, our contractor just made the final connection to the water main today and expect to start, um, whatever restoration is, is required under this contract so the road contractor can get in, um, and start working. So my expectation is that he is going to want to start somewhere around the beginning of May. So again, to your point, um, if it were to wait till May twelfth, um, chances are there wouldn't be a drastic concern about the, um, um, mobilization costs, um, but if it extended beyond that, it might.
Okay. Further, Alderman Budmat?
Okay, so then if we could, okay, um, I mean, I think as of right now, the plan was still to try to have the order lifted by the end of this month. Um, and if we're talking the May twelfth, that's the first date in, of the meeting, I think, in, oh, the first date of our meeting in May. Um, so I don't see that it would damage in any way for us to hold this off until the first meeting in May for approval. If they haven't even started on the first project that they need to complete before they start the second project, it would not hurt them if we give them the approval to do the second project when they haven't even started the first one yet, unless I'm missing something.
Director Horn, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, i- i- if I can, Alderman Budmat, um, generally, if, uh, related when they combine their, their projects, um, and they're looking to save money on mobilization, just to be clear, they usually try to do the projects in, in concurrents. Um, so they'll do the concrete work at all locations at once, and then they'll do the grinding at all locations at once. So they're not going to do one project, finish it, then move to another one. They're going to try and, just, just so we're clear on the mobilization issue.
Sorry, I wasn't aware of that. Okay.
Um, anything else, uh, Alderman Budmat? If not, Alderman Bessesi had their hand up, and Sanoyka. Okay, Alderman Bessesi, do you still?
I think, I think my questions are more or less answered by Mr. Horn. Um, and I can say that the project is completed. It, mine was the last house. Or just about the last house. Uh, they have connected the water main and they have started, uh, um, trying to restore the pavement. So they're, I mean, the virus has done one good thing. It's really sped up the, the project quite a bit because they've been able to have, you know, zero traffic down the street. Um, but my questions have already been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Alderman Sanoyka, forgive me, but I, I, I've lost count if you've spoken twice already during this time. If not, then the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to check with our parliamentarian. If we, if we were to postpone this, would we be able to waive first reading and vote on second rea- uh, reading on May twelfth?
Yes, you can choose to do that, uh, on May twelfth at that time.
Please remember that this is also a resolution, not an ordinance. It only needs one reading.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Barry.
And then, um, the, the second question that I have is, um, would staff be able to provide that detailed strategy for COVID-nineteen by the May twelfth, uh, meeting? Or is with the audit, that's impossible to expect?
This is Melissa. I'm your director. Yeah, go ahead, Barry. Sorry.
So, um, the comment would be, like we said, we're going to start trickling more stuff per the mayor's request and some of the other pieces, but it's really that June that we will have a good piece that we know where we're going. But again, we've already levied for it. We already have it in, um, you put it in the place. And I know that this is the motion to postpone. My only comment would be, um, and again, as the manager, as some of the other pieces, obviously, uh, Director Horn is on it, is it a great price? It moves things. It keeps, uh, consistency with this contractor that we can do the project and without any potential increases. But at the same point in time, this is a resolution. It only needs one reading. Recommendation would be just to keep this moving. And again, we will be giving you some information as we can, and then that June cow will be a little good to you. And even after the June, we're going to be monitoring because, again, by December, we need to know where we sit. But we're in a good place, and again, we look at the whole budget overall, not just one fund, but everything overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. And I, I just want to emphasize that while we are always reviewing our, our stress tests and making sure that we have enough revenue available, specifically with, with, with COVID-nineteen and this pandemic and the fact that a lot of people are losing their jobs, um, this is maybe something that should be, be prioritized for us. And so if we need eight hundred thousand dollars right now to help our residents just living, then, then that should be where we are, are putting our money, right?
Yeah, I mean rhetorically, but, um, with that, we, we do come to the, the time here when we have to, uh, make the vote on whether or not we postpone this until the governor lifts, uh, this, this shelter in place as the motion is provided. So if there aren't further comments or questions from those who have not spoken yet, I believe everyone else has defended two times, um, I will have the clerk call roll on postponing.
Budmat?
Yes. Yes?
O'Brien? O'Brien? Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
No.
Diastis?
No.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
With four in favor and three opposed, this does postpone as the motion implied. That now brings us on to the second of the two that were pulled, and this is going to be line item G, Resolution Number Two Zero Dash R Dash Four Two, authorize the purchase of fiscal year 2020 asphalt materials for Public Works' operation. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Alderman Budmat, I'll have you make that motion and have a second so you can go ahead and take the bite out of the apple. Thank you, O'Brien. Thank you, Budmat. Alderman Budmat, the floor is yours.
Um, I just have one question. Is this going to keep people who are on staff working now? Or is, when is this intended purchase?
Was your direct question directed toward Alderman?
I'm assuming, um, Mr. Horn.
Uh, this, this purchase is, uh, an annual purchase. So we purchase it at the beginning of the season, and it gets used throughout the entire year. Um, you know, generally, uh, we do most of our asphalt in, uh, in later in the summer. Um, but we try to steal days here and there, um, between special events. Um, and we also use it for coal patch purch- purchasing. So, um, yeah, it's a, it's a year-long approval for asphalt that gets used by our staff throughout the year.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay. Anything further in the way of questions or discussion for this item from any other councilman or woman? Okay, I don't see any more hands. So the question is, shall this resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmat?
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, this resolution is adopted. Uh, this brings us down to other business and reports. The mayor does not have any appointments at this time, nor do I have any proclamations. Does the city clerk have anything to report?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Then this brings us down to city staff reports and community items of interest. I will defer to Manager Crumstock when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we have a full list, and I do want to elaborate on a few of them. Obviously, we want to thank everybody who, um, really participated in the city's mobile food pantry. We do have another one coming up for this Friday, April seventeenth, between eleven and one P.M. at the gazebo outside of East Park Apartments in front of the police office. That's twenty-two seventy Elgonquin Road. And then we also have one coming up, and this one's being run by Harvest Bible Chapel, which will be coming up on, uh, Saturday, April eighteenth, and they're between ten A.M. and noon. Those are actually new, um, ones that we are, um, outing. I would tell you that the last Friday one, we had approximately two hundred individuals, and that's what these are set for. And we did watch our, um, obviously, how people were lining up and all the cars and everything. But it's really been very beneficial, and the food pantry events have been really utilized. We do put it on our city website. We do put it in English and Spanish, and we do make sure. We really do want to thank all the business community and actually everybody who has donated to this, and especially the groceries and the restaurant gift cards, um, to families who are in need. We do want to also call out one group, um, our engineering firm, Christopher B. Burke Engineering, donated a large amount of money, um, and thousands of dollars to the last one that we actually had for, uh, gift cards in the food pantry. So we do appreciate, we do want to tell people, just like, um, Mayor Gallo mentioned during his items, please look at our website. We do put this once they're scheduled. Um, we do try advertising the best that we can to make sure that the mobile food pantries are being taken care of. And just reiterating, there are two of them this week, the Friday one at East Park Apartments, and that would be for about two hundred people. And then on Saturday, April, um, eighteenth, this one will be at Harvest Bible Chapel in the parking lot between ten and noon. And we do appreciate Harvest Bible to giving us, um, volunteers and actually PD, Police Department personnel who have been working on these too. We do want to make sure that everybody knows for safety and protection of the community, the Public Works Department prepared refuse and recycling guidelines. Um, this was in guidance with SWANC, or a solid waste agency that we participate, and it deals with the emergency response and health agency items that we have. The refuse and recycling guidelines, um, follow the topics to mention, whether it's on the website. I hope that people actually do look at it, and it is posted throughout the city and via social media pages. And if Alderman Cannon will make sure that it's out there on other, is on our electronic signs, our website, Channel Six that we're putting out there. But we do want to mention to everybody, and please, please, it's really important, um, if you or someone in your household shows some symptoms, please do not reci- use any recycle bags. Um, it really needs to go into the trash and, um, refuse, and it needs to be tied tight. It needs to be, make sure that it's secured. Um, we just want to make sure that if you have a concern about anything recyclable now, just put it into your garbage. But the bags and ties need to be tight. Um, and then if you do not recycle, um, or we do want to emphasize, and obviously, um, one Alderman can reemphasize this when she does her video, but do not recycle PPEs. Those need to go into the garbage. They need to be tied up tight, and they need to make sure what is actually able to be in there. I would reiterate to people that, um, please, please make sure again that your bags are tied, and it is weekly, uh, pickup. And, uh, as everybody knows, Public Works is never stopped, and they continue. We do see an uptick on, on amount of garbage out there, but we are out there, and as Mayor Gallo knows, you know, because it's our own guys, we are maintaining everything. There are other municipalities that have had concerns. They've had other items that need to be looked at. Um, the high-quality service that Rolling Meadows gets from the Public Works continues and will continue on at this point in time. We do want to make sure that people know that they do need to be closed and tied. Unclosed or damaged bags will not be picked up, and that's to keep our, um, crews safe. Um, so again, make sure that everything's tight. Um, place your bags at the curb in the morning by six A.M. Double bags smelling waste. Obviously, we do have critters floating around all over things. Spray bags with Windex or Aroma if you have a concern, because that does keep our little critters away. And then rebag damaged garbage that is not picked up, or, um, you know, because our guys will try cleaning it up, but again, it's always better to be safer than everything else. With that, I do want to also remind, a friendly reminder for safe and proper disposal of gloves and masks, plastic gowns, face masks cannot be placed in the recycling bins at your home. And again, I do emphasize that all gloves and face masks should be placed in the trash bag when you are out in the community or shopping. Please dispose of your gloves and masks in a garbage bag and not in shopping carts or on the ground. And as has been reiterated during the ward reports, please keep each other safe and healthy. Please look over the elderly, but also please maintain your social distancing. I know that we've had some good weather and people want to congregate, but it's very important that everybody maintain what we're doing. The other item that, if you look throughout the community, we've put up some banners, um, and this is just a friendly reminder because Public Works has been very busy with cleaning sewers, but do not flush any type of wipes down the toilet. Only flush toilet paper down the, um, toilet. Flushing wipes, even the ones that say flushable, creates sewer issues and backups. Um, do not flush wipes, disposable wipes, cleaning wipes, um, cleaning related cloths, Kleenexes or other items down the toilet. Dispose of those items in your trash. And again, it's very important to mention this, uh, to neighbors and friends. Um, obviously, has been reported, and we will continue reporting. We do have another update. If you have not done so, please take a few minutes out of your day and respond to the U.S. Census survey. Rolling Meadows is doing a Rolling Meadows is doing a great job at this point in time. The last numbers that we looked at, response rate was at fifty-seven point four. It is outpacing the state of Illinois, which is at fifty point four. But everybody wins when you respond to the twenty-twenty census, because everyone is counted. There are more opportunities for shaping our community's future. As a reminder, you may respond to the U.S. Census survey online at twenty-twenty census dot gov, or by phone at eight-four-four three-three oh two oh two oh, or using your printed U.S. survey to respond by mail. If I remember correctly, um, in May, the Census Bureau will be doing door-to-door. They were not doing it in April now. That was something. But please respond. It's very important. Even as we've talked about budgeting, that's where some of our L G D F money is coming from. A reminder for the community, the I R S has announced that federal income tax filing due dates is, um, automatically extended from April fifteenth, twenty-twenty to July fifteenth, twenty-twenty. It's best to file by, um, the sooner you can, but at the same thing, the I R S and even the state of Illinois urges, um, you know, items to be filed, but please, um, make sure that you do look for it, and they are still sending out refunds as they can do that too. A friendly reminder that white waste, uh, yard waste collection started on Monday, March thirtieth, so that continues at a high-quality rate. And again, by ordinance from November first to March thirty-first, residents should be doing that with their refuse and recycling. And again, six P M. The night before, the scheduled pickup is when it should be out. If you have any questions, please contact Public Works at eight-four-seven nine-six-three zero-five-zero-zero, or visit the, uh, website. Another friendly reminder, I have a lot of these, um, is that for residents and businesses, if you are having a hard time paying your utility bill, or food and beverage payment, or some kind of concern, please contact finance at eight-four-seven three-nine-four-eighty-five-hundred, or email finance, uh, at citirm.org, and they may be able to place you on a payment plan. And I can tell the council that we've always had, we've always worked with, uh, residents. At this point in time, um, as of today, with the usual people that we have on payment plans for businesses and others, only four other individuals. If you have any more questions, please reach out to Finance Director Melissa Gallagher, but we're working with everybody. We will look at all the other pieces as we have. And I know that one of the businesses that asked today, they've never had an issue. They just need some stability, and we're more than happy to work with everybody, because that's all part of what we do. And that's also another reason why you maintain your fund balances. Um, the other item that I want to mention is, um, next Tuesday, April twenty-first, the city council will be conducting the April Committee Hall meeting. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to public comment. Um, the conference line printed on the agenda, we're requiring members of the public who wish to comment at this meeting to email the Deputy City Clerk Judy Bros at brosj@citirm.org at least one hour before the start of the meeting. We also urge residents to listen to the live or recorded broadcasting of the meeting from their homes and to email any communications you want to address to the city council or staff to, again, Deputy City Clerk Judy Bros at brosj@citirm.org, or please use any of our emails. We are responding. The broadcast of the meetings may be found on Channel Six, auto-only, um, or the following link as we stated. I do want to really thank, um, the I T department, Kelly and Wassim, who are actually in the A V room right now. They've been doing, doing a phenomenal job. Obviously, um, it's a three-person department due to, um, obviously items that have been happening and also my health. Um, when we had it, um, they are short one person. We have that vacancy that continues, and at some point, we will be filling it. But again, and when you see Wassim or Kelly, you send them an email. They've just been doing a phenomenal job, like all the other employees, but outstanding with what they do. They've also been taxed a lot from me and other staff and, uh, council members that we've been loading the, uh, website with as much as we can. And please keep on sending us, uh, everything that you can do. And then I also want to mention, the last one that's on the sheet is finally, please shop Rolling Meadows. It is more important than ever. Um, shopping means going out and getting from the restaurants, going to the jewels, the Walmarts, the, um, Myers, um, the dollar stores. It's very important. Locally means a lot, but also it's maintaining our other pieces. It's significant to remember our big boxes, our restaurants and small businesses at this time and actually with the overall. Um, you know, we also do want to mention, there are six ways to support, and this is not on the list, um, local businesses from a distance. You can buy gift cards. You can order takeout or delivery. You can shop local, online, um, which also means shop local if you can. Um, tip generously, again, as, um, has been stated during this council meeting. There are people losing jobs. There are people who are really dependent. Um, you know, anything that we can do, that's greatly appreciated, even for the food pantry, if you would like to donate. Um, you know, a P D would put you in touch with that, or we can get you in that. And then, um, share a great online review. That's great for, uh, business overall. And the final thing that I think everybody should take into remembering things is just say thanks. And, you know, we're, we're all doing social, um, distancing, but it's very important that everybody remembers we're all here together. So with that, it's a little longer than usual, but those are items of interest, and I thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Um, at this time, I think if you can continue with any of the twenty-twenty new businesses within the month of February, uh, that would be helpful. Manager Crumstock?
You know, I would say at that point is you have a list, um, and again, um, we'll have more on that too. Um, I would actually be kind of interesting to mention that during the, these weeks that we've been closed, um, as, as been mentioned before, but, um, business advocate Martha Corner has been working with businesses, and we actually did have a new business move into community, um, Kung-Fu Tea. Um, they're more of an online seller, but we'll have more about them too. But again, please visit, uh, the new businesses, old businesses, big boxes, restaurants and businesses overall, and thank you.
Good. Thank you. That will now bring us forward to, um, talking about our, um, Traffic Review Committee Director Horn. I'm going to go ahead and unmute for you, and let's, uh, see if the audio works better. Uh, take it away.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, there's not a lot to report from this month. Uh, most of the items, uh, are repeats from previous months. Uh, just updated those with our current, um, with the current status of those items. Um, uh, one item to note is Arbor Drive, uh, there's parking restrictions that are, um, going to, uh, or parking restrictions that are being proposed. Uh, city ma- uh, city attorney provided, uh, um, information on that at upcoming meeting. Or, um, so other than that, um, I, I have nothing else to report.
Well, thank you. Um, then that brings us now to the April twenty-first.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to, this is Melissa.
Sure.
I didn't give the city operations update for COVID.
Yeah, let me, uh, actually, uh, Mayor, if we can just, uh, give me, let me do the agendas, and then I'll come back to that point.
Yeah, you know what? And that was not on my, you know, I have two monitors up, and obviously, the agenda has, uh, one list, and the other one does not have the, uh, COVID report, so my apologies.
Oh, no, no. That's why I'm just trying to say, if we can just continue, and we'll go back to that between Melissa and I, because it does relate to item one on the cow.
Okay. Um, well, then, let's go with, uh, let's go in that order then.
So, um, just going with the order with our staff report for number four is the draft agenda for the committee of the hall meeting for April twenty-first. Um, we have the city operations update, the COVID-nineteen response. And that's actually right after we do the next agenda, um, Mayor and City Council, hopefully you'll hear that between Melissa and I, about, we do want to have that staff report read today, but we have a longer detail conversation at the committee at the hall. We're also going to do a twenty-twenty community event, uh, update for twenty-twenty. Some of these have been postponed. Some of them are being canceled. We need to let the, uh, council and obviously the residents understand what's happening in response to some of these other pieces. Um, you're going to hear about, um, typically National Night Out is in August. It's been moved to October. We're moving things. But it's very important that we hear that, um, when we're reopened and we're able to be with residents and we're able to be with our businesses, we will be having events back. Um, all of May is pretty much canceled, but that's why number two is on there. Engineering cost comparison, that will be, uh, Director Rob Horn talking about that. The chipper program survey questions are out there. And then more discussions as what has been alluded to tonight with the G-one discussion. Um, G-one, G-two, as we've been alluding to, and obviously, um, city attorney Melissa Wolf, and, uh, Public Works have been talking about some of the zoning and some of the other items that we have with that. With that, that is what we have for the community of the hall, um, coming up next week on April twenty-first. The next item.
Yep.
The next item, if I can just jump straight into that, is the draft agenda for the April twenty-eighth meeting in two weeks. Um, obviously, we do have a meeting. Um, it will be telephonic, so please contact, uh, Deputy City Clerk Judy Bros if you want more information. But approve no parking on Arbor Drive. That will be a first reading that we have. Pay some bills, um, adopt the twenty-twenty zoning map hopefully. Um, award the contract for the twenty-twenty sanitary sewer and stormwater rehabilitation pipelining. And we'll have a resolution to award a contract for roof replacement in wellhouse number six located in nineteen fifty Gulf Road. We also have award the contract for the twenty-twenty street maintenance program pavement rejuvenator application. Um, and again, that does give more longevity to streets. Um, resolution, and the next resolution that we do have is award a contract for professional engineering services for their proposed drainage study on the Hicks Road, Kirchhoff Road area. This is something that we have mentioned to the, uh, city council in the past. It is the last meeting of April, and Mayor will have some appointments to the Economic Development Committee and Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, obviously, all appointments that are up at this point in time for committees overall are set for, um, April thirtieth. We will have Municipal Clerks Week, um, proclamation. Um, I mean, Deputy City Clerk has to write that, because I'm not writing that one, and that's my little sidebar. Um, items of interest, we'll have more about that. We also do want to, even though we had the, we'll be having the update right after this about the city operations. We will be having the committee of the hall about city operations. Um, we will have another staff report just to keep it on people's minds, and then the March twenty-twenty new business, and then obviously some closed. But that's what we have scheduled at this point in time, as we continue working through agendas and agenda items. Um, that would be that item, and then if anybody else has any questions, I would like to, um, Mayor, move to going back to the city operations update between, um, Finance Director Melissa Gallagher and I.
Yeah, and to be clear, there are no discussions during staff reports, but, uh, Ms. Gallagher, feel free to go ahead and, and provide the report on the, uh, city operations update for COVID-nineteen.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and City Council. Uh, what we wanted to do tonight was again, provide you a staff report, which is in the packet. Um, and then also this provides information to residents and businesses. Uh, while City Hall and Public Works are temporarily closed to the public, um, based on the governor's, uh, stay-at-home orders, um, all public safety operations are continuing. Um, all, uh, Public Works, fire departments, police departments, services continue. In fact, City Hall is quite busy, um, in general, even though we are remote in, in a lot of cases, and we are also practicing social distancing. Uh, we are trying to make sure that, as the city manager and mayor have mentioned, that please keep in, uh, formed by the city's website at W W dot citirm dot org. It's continually being updated, and it's just really important to get out there and, uh, let residents know that it's out there too. Uh, the city emergency planning committee and all city departments are tracking COVID-nineteen activities and expenses at this time. And in discussions today with, uh, officials today and different agencies on several calls that we had, uh, we are monitoring and tracking all our city expenses. There are lots of, uh, different funding information coming out. Uh, we're making sure that we're tracking so that future reimbursement does take place. This is going to be a long-term process, and it's important from the very get-go to, to track everything in place, and that's what we're doing. Um, within the packet itself, and I put this down as important information, if everyone can just also just remember that, um, if you do have questions, to please reach out to any, uh, of us here within the community, uh, within City Hall. Um, our payment white drop box is open twenty-four-seven, so if somebody has a payment for City Hall, just to place it in the white drop box with their check and their coupon. But you can also mail your payment. Uh, we are not, we do not have any late penalties. There's no water shut-off or water bills. And we are, we are working with people, um, on those kinds of payment plans. We've had a lot of different questions. Should I pay my water bill? Uh, yes, if you are able to pay your water bill. In fact, we've had a couple of sweet residents who called and said, I just got my employment, unemployment check. I, I want to make sure, can you hear me okay?
You're doing fine.
Oh, okay. I just couldn't tell. Sorry. Uh, and, and one of the residents just asked whether or not, uh, they could pay by their unemployment, uh, MasterCard that they received. And we said, yes, you may. And I thought that was a very touching, uh, thing that happened the other day. Um, we're also working very, very closely, and in the weekly notes, we put that there as well. Uh, I just wanted to give a little information. It kind of expands the staff report. But for food and beverage, motor fuel and hotel taxes, as City Manager Crumstock mentioned, we have four, uh, restaurants. We also have others that have been on payment plans, but four restaurants right now on a payment plan. And why that is important for us to know and to track, we are not assessing late fees. But what's really important is that we're able to have them still file their tax form with us so that we are able to show for our audit, uh, no matter what month it is. We have to show our auditors that it was filed and filed on time. So the restaurant that worked, uh, with us today and sent this information, they actually sent in their, their form, and we're going to get back to them with a, with a phone call tomorrow, because it came in late, uh, in the day. And we're just asking, if you know of a restaurant, you know of a, uh, you know, a gas station that reaches out to you, please just send them our way, and we'll get them on a payment plan. We'll, we'll work with them, but it's really important for them to file. Also in the weekly notes, not in the staff report, but in our weekly notes this week, we did let everyone know about annual business license renewals. There were a couple of questions on that, uh, really good ones. Uh, our annual business renewals take place in the month of November and December prior year, so that businesses can pay over about two-month span. And so November twenty-nineteen, they paid for their business license for twenty-twenty. So that means that for business license renewals, uh, for the most part, uh, there's always a few businesses that, um, we all work with, but for the most part, everyone is paid. And so there is at this time, no issues for businesses who, uh, they are renewed for twenty-twenty. I also put in the weekly notes, just for everybody's, uh, information, that liquor license renewals, uh, the police department has notified all businesses with city-issued liquor licenses, uh, that these, uh, are extended, uh, based on the state, uh, of Illinois liquor control rules and commission rules. So what's important is those licenses that are expiring from now, end of March thirtieth, uh, April thirtieth and May thirtieth, they are extended until July thirty-first. And that's really important if you are speaking with anyone who is concerned. However, we still like to know about that so we can track it. And if they have questions, uh, the chief, uh, Chief Nowacki is probably the best person to reach out to, uh, but they also may reach out to me as well. Uh, but we are following the guidance from the state of Illinois on that. Uh, with that being said, uh.
I do have, I do have, yeah. I do have, uh, additional before we sign off on it. But obviously, seeing the write-up and anybody who's reading the write-up, we really do appreciate the city's emergency planning committee and all the department heads and all everybody who's been working on it. I mean, we've been doing a lot of tracking activities, and we've been setting up another budget, might want to call, with all of our reimbursements, and greatly appreciate all the work. But I also do want to single out, um, obviously Lieutenant Ben Dwyer, and obviously, we've said this before, but Don Wenzel, because they've really been doing a lot of work on this stuff. And Don Wenzel actually went to Cook County and picked up more gloves for us, because we were low on certain places. But again, we've been working as a whole team, and that's what, um, obviously you have here, and that's what we really do appreciate. Everybody's work on it, and obviously, for the council, the committee, and also all the department heads, we are watching all of our activities and expenses, but we're also making sure that we are covered with P P Ps the best that we can, and also making sure that the high-quality services continue. But you will continue to hear about the responses, but we do appreciate everybody who's asked about us, and especially all the residents and businesses who have been reaching out and thanking people. But I just wanted to add that, Melissa.
Oh, no, that's such a good point, City Manager Crumstock, because I think, uh, the more that we can, um, provide to the residents through, uh, the city council, to each one on the city council, through the mayor, through the chamber, the more information people have, uh, the better that they are to proceed in this, this time of crisis. And so with that being said, I'll just keep it short, uh, because I know we've gone through a couple of different things. But I know for some questions for utility billing, again, our city's new utility billing platform, we have delayed that. Um, but no new details at this time, but, uh, for those that are on automatic bill pay for our current, um, monthly bills, those will be, uh, debited out. We have roughly about twenty-five percent of our, uh, residents on auto pay for a credit card or a bank account, and that will be debited out this April twentieth, and we've already set that up. So just to buy, just to be, uh, clear again, paper bills will continue to be mailed out to residents, and we are working with customers, uh, and residents in this time of crisis. So just wanted to put that out there again as a short staff report, and just turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Finance Director Gallagher. I appreciate that. Um, this brings us now. This brings us now to matters not on the agenda. Alderman Cannon, I did see your hand quickly go up. I'm not sure if it was intended, but if so, the floor is yours for matters not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I have is many months ago, we talked about putting some of our parcels of property that we own up on the market and we've been waiting diligently for proposals and I have not seen or heard anything. And I'm really getting concerned because now I don't see it on either on the COW meeting or the next agenda. So I don't know how many more months we have to wait, but I think it's important that we move on these things, especially by the fact that we just bought a piece of our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Veniziano, then Besessi and Sanoyka. And then Manager Crumstock, you can answer after that order. Alderman Veniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to share with the residents that our local hospital, NCH, is now accepting donations of handmade masks. So for anyone that's sitting at home that's feeling crafty, they are accepting those donations. You can call 847-618-0252 or email supplydonation@nch.org. And then the hospital is also accepting any PPE from any local businesses such as gloves, masks, gowns. I know the high school just made a huge donation and we, of course, appreciate that. So if you're feeling up to making some masks for our hospital, for our staff, we would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for that announcement. Alderman Besessi and then Sanoyka, then Manager Crumstock, then Cannon again.
So a couple of quick things. One, I want to, you know, thank Public Works and they can pass on the contractor, the speed at which the water connections were all done in the ward. Second, really a question more for Mr. Horn, Director Horn. Will the vote tonight at all move the schedule of actually putting our sidewalks back together? If he's still there.
I don't want to touch any buttons. No, that won't affect that at all.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'm still muted, too. Yep. Alderman Sanoyka, I was trying to let you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify from our discussion earlier this evening about ensuring that we have clear, not necessarily clear direction, but a couple of different scenarios of like the expected scenario and the worst-case scenario when it comes to ensuring that our revenue streams are healthy and that we don't, or that we're preparing for our residents to also be financially impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And so what I'm hoping to get, to be able to make decisions on all of our projects, all of our capital improvement projects going forward, is that we will be able to afford it if we don't really have revenue coming in. And so is there something that we could put together with staff that we can get before June or, yeah, is there something that we can get before June in order to be able to make that decision?
And you know, that goes back to my point where I'm just looking for a forecast, right? And I just want some generalizations developed. We don't have to get too granular or in the weeds, but if we could look at the level of impact from a 10, a 30 and an 80% impact. And I know it's not that simple, right? Like I'm aware of that, but I think if we can get that established, that illustration will help the rest of us on the council communicate and connect better with residents or make future decisions. And, you know, this is a conversation I will have with Manager Crumstock in detail throughout the rest of this week, along with Melissa Gallagher, Finance Director Gallagher on this. And if we can just have some generalizations put together for it, that'll be better than nothing if we have to wait till June. Again, my analogy was if I'm riding out a storm, you know, sailing, I don't wait to put down the sails and tighten up the hatches. I do that all now in the storm and I know how I'm going to go through it from there. We do have Manager Crumstock, you still had your hand up to help address Alderman Cannon's question.
Yeah, and I can actually, I can actually deal with both those. So again, property for sale, that obviously I started that with what the council saw when we did an analysis of some of the firms and obviously we were going to get back to them and we were going to bring them in for interviews, but that's not working. I did reach out to two of them that are more comfortable that I feel with them and asked them if they were willing to have a phone conversation so I can have a comfort level to give you why I think their professional services are the best over that. Both of them were working remotely and did not get back to me, but that's why you don't see it on the schedule, but it is still on my things to do, bring back and especially with some of the other pieces. We're still waiting to hear back from one group that was interested in the Algonquin Road property. They have not responded back one way or another if they're still working on getting additional property to that, but we're going to go back. Obviously, the mayor and the city council, we've had the conversation with you. What would you like to see on some of the properties? We've not heard, Mayor Gallagher and I have had the conversation and what their two finalists that I'm really dealing with, they're really being told commercial and that is it. But then they come back with, what is your idea of commercial? And when I tell them no car washes and other things, that's just my interpretation. But again, if you can get more feedback, and I know that Mayor Gallagher and I have talked about some of this, but it's also getting some of the feedback because those are interested. But Cannon, Alderman Cannon, it is still on my things. I would have wished that with everything else going on, it would have already been done. That's why you don't see it because again, I think that you know me long enough that we do vet even our professional services and the comfort level. And the two that you will see, they're very high quality, even the names that we gave you with how much they would ask for a percentage, they're very high quality, all the ones that we dealt with and they're in the area. The other thing that I do want to mention and reiterate, and I think that you've heard me say this before, after Mayor Gallagher mentioned about having some updates, we are going to give you the updates and some of the scenarios and some of the other pieces. But again, that best shot that we're going to do is June, but we will start doing some of the pie charts and some of the scenarios that we see. Because we saw, again, where we were sitting as of March, but then March 16, certain things closed down and with some of the other pieces. But there are also guestimates, but again, that's why you have the fund balance, but you will start seeing some of that trickle. So again, June is a bigger picture, but some of those pie charts that Mayor Gallagher mentioned during the mayor's report and some of the other pieces, because we need to look at some of those other items. Because there's also some concern even from some of the other communities, is the state of Illinois going to take some of our money that they've already taken from LGDF. And some of those concerns, it's just more conversations. We have not heard any legislator say they would affect us in that way more than they're already affecting us. But that's why we also keep a second budget on reimbursements. That's why we continue some of those other pieces. So with that, I will put my hand down and I hope those answer those two quick ones.
Yeah, that is helpful, Manager Crumstock. And so I also, you know, as I mentioned in my award report, I have not been receiving feedback from residents that describe how much hardship that they're experiencing right now. I understand that many relief resources at the state level and perhaps at the county level as well are not arriving quickly. And so since we're at the local level, we potentially have the ability to act faster and be more nimble than the state. And if that's the case, and I would be open to using our reserves and delaying some projects if it means that we're able to provide immediate relief for our residents as well. And so I'm hoping that we're also taking those factors into account and really going beyond just waiving late fees or preventing shut-offs and going beyond to demonstrate that we care about our people, because we do, right? And I understand that we're also demonstrating that through all of the great services that we have, but this is kind of an unprecedented time as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Manager Crumstock, I'm going to lower your hand. And then if there is anyone else who has any matters not on the agenda, now is the time. And seeing none, then that does bring us the opportunity to go into closed session as there is a request to go into closed session. It will require a motion and a roll call vote. Do I have a motion by show of hands? Thank you, Alderman Besessi. Thank you, Alderman Cannon. And is there any discussion on this entering into closed session? Alderman Cannon, your hand is still up. Not sure if there's discussion or if it's just the legacy. Thank you. And seeing no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Veniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budman?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and an opposed, we will go into closed session to discuss personnel. Five ILCS 120-2C. And the audience that is in attendance here are advised that we do not anticipate taking any further action in open session once we adjourn closed session. So with that, I wish you a good evening. Stay well, stay home if possible. City council members, we will exit out of this call and then enter into closed session conference line.